... agenda for this evening?
All set, Mr. Chairman. We do need the non-public for personnel and it's mostly co-curricular appointments.
Okay. Minutes of August 14th will contain a motion to accept this stated.
Motion to accept. Seconded.
Principles report.
Hi Julie.
Hi Mike, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
I did distribute the enrollment breakdown, the monthly enrollment breakdown. Average class size is at around 15. Our largest one is in sixth grade with one of the classes at 21, the other two are at 20. And the smallest is at 12 or 13 students in seventh grade. Of course, we haven't settled yet. We have new students coming still to this day, so. Thank you to the PTA for hosting a beautiful welcome back barbecue. The timing was perfect. First Wednesday of the school year and it was wonderful to see so many families and teachers mingling and feasting on really great barbecue fare. So much behind the scenes actions go into this successful event. Thank you to the PTA and to the new president, Brandon Pike, for making sure this wonderful tradition continues. Eighth graders Ethan Gerard and Luke Bisson, our entrepreneurs, had their popcorn machine and lemonade stand going during the event. And the student council harvested the sunflowers from our garden out back. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look, it's really beautiful when you walk up in the back of our school. So they harvested some and sold them to support hurricane relief. And today, the first graders harvested the sunflowers for an activity and the remaining sunflowers will be at our open house this Wednesday again for hurricane relief. So it was a, and that was all student driven. Speaking of an open house, at the end of the barbecue, the middle school hosted their open house. With the big overnight trips coming up or having gone by, it was a perfect time to check in with families. In addition to sharing information about the big trips, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teams reviewed academic procedures, including those work habits that we worked hard on last year just to continue that focus on them, on those important habits for students. The student council president, Anna Apolliano, and vice president Lauren Cacerino did a phenomenal job leading our first school-wide pledge of allegiance on last Thursday, August 31st. The assembly provided an opportunity for us to welcome new students, introduce new teachers, and to review our new school-wide behavior expectations. We did have some laughter when a kindergarten student said that one of the expectations was not to stand on the art stools. Got a charge out of that, it was great. But we got back to the four Bs after that. So we asked, after the assembly, we asked the middle school students to stay back and just had almost a separate conversation with them regarding the work habits again and talk specifically about how those are really the pathway to success, you know, here at the high school and beyond. So it was, it was a great conversation and they are, they're always great kids and I know Kelly's going to share more, more about them. In addition to our new teachers, we want to welcome Kelly Zagopolis, our Plymouth Elementary School nurse, Ms. Zee, as we call her now, has significant experience as a pediatric nurse and one of her goals includes growing family and community connections. On Thursday, September 7th, our new teachers met with our PES-PACE team to review our process for quality performance assessments. Each received a copy of our QPA handbook as well as a copy of the book, Most Likely to Succeed. We are really excited that our new team of teachers bring, have already brought some really fresh ideas for designing engaging and rigorous performance assessments. I know we have had questions about our music program position and in reflecting over last year, two major components of our program were the recorder instruction and the square dancing, which sounds like square dancing, but they are really important standards for the music program and for movement. Mr. Stevens and I would like to bring you a proposal for developing a contract for someone to work January through March-ish, a day or two a week to instruct third and fourth graders to play the recorder. And we are also thinking about the same approach for square dancing. So he, he has access to some potential candidates for that, so wanting to make sure, keep that in our program. And I just wanted to keep you in the loop, Plymouth did not qualify for the federally-funded fruits and vegetables in program this year. We've had it for four years and having access to that, those free fruits and vegetables for every kid in the school has been like a little ripple effect of concern. So several groups in our building, including the PTA, our staff, our leadership team, we're just speaking about it, and the wellness committee are investigating ways to provide a healthy alternative to the program, just so you have that on your radar.
If I, if I may, for members of the board and the public. And the reason is that our free and reduced percentage went below 40%. That's the, that's the cutoff for the federal government. If your free and reduced is 40% or above, you qualify for the free food and vegetable program and we dip below. So the message that we're sending out, and you weren't the only school that had that happen to, is please fill out the forms, folks are entitled to that. That's an entitlement program based on income and, and don't let your pride get in the way because, one, the kids get fed and as a school, we get access to those sorts of programs, which is good for all of us. And also, that number is part of entitlement grants from the federal government. That's huge. It puts us in some, some really good categories to get, to get money. So any family that, that is near those guidelines, please, please fill out the form. You may get free lunch, you may get reduced lunch, but whatever you get is, is help to all of us. And so we make that plea to all of our families. I know families have great pride and they, you know, we'll do it on our own, but you know, let's use some common sense and, and there are programs there to help. They're not only for the help of those families, it's also an agricultural subsidy for farmers because it takes a lot of fruits and vegetables off of the commodities market, which stabilizes prices. And so you're not only helping yourself, our school, but you're also helping small farmers, large farmers by stabilizing crop prices, so.
Can I ask, at what point are parents in form or is the form, are they able to enroll?
It's ongoing. And all those applications go out at the beginning of school. If someone has thrown it away, we'll give you another one. And, and it's a pretty liberal guideline. So people can be both working and they may, depending on the number of folks in their household, they may qualify for even perhaps reduced, which is, which is as helpful as free for us.
It's a great program.
It's a great program and it's there to, it's there to help folks.
Mark, can I ask the question? Could that change over the course of the year?
It would for the following year.
If our percentages, okay, so they go from year to year.
Drop dead dates, just from the bureaucracy. So we're, we're in it for this year.
For the year.
But this plea is for next year and years to, years to come. But you can qual, you can qualify now and get it as a family and that number will help us in years to come.
For the following year.
So don't, no family should hold off and say, well, I'll do it next year. Do it now. And, and even if you don't, we get a letter from us saying, we're sorry you don't qualify, that's fine. At least give it a shot, look at the income levels.
Free and reduced numbers also factor into Title I.
Title I.
Does this?
Yeah, Title I, Title II, everything, yeah. It's a, it's a weighted equation and then, and it has an awful lot of weight because it's an indicator of poverty level.
And I think we do a really nice job of being discreet here at the school. It's not a, it's not an issue.
Yeah, kids all have the same card, so they swipe their card, no one knows if it's cash, if it's this, if it's that. Everyone's treated exactly the same. There were horror stories from 10 and 12 years ago when we had to do things manually, but not anymore. Everybody is, is on the computer and I just went through your line today to take the cards and it goes, that's the end of it.
It's nice to see Mr. Halloran in the lunchroom today.
Second graders, I'll have, you know, chicken nuggets, they're good.
And just while we're on the topic of food, did the policy for students with insufficient funds get changed as, as was discussed?
Yes, yeah, we tightened up our administrative guidelines.
Great.
We, we still, we still feed folks.
Right.
It's, it's, it's the à la carte items.
Right.
That you'll get a lunch from us. If you have no money in your account, you'll get the federal lunch, but you won't have access to à la carte items without, without money in your account. And same with the breakfast.
And parents can access all of the forms for, for free and reduced online as well, so.
And if they, if they can't, we'll, you can come into the school, ask for them, we'll run them off and give them to you. Go ahead Julie, I'm sorry.
No, this is important. And I only have a few upcoming dates, but great dates. Tomorrow, September 12th, our fourth graders are walking down to the White Mountain, the Museum of the White Mountains, part of a social studies event. And the next day, we have our open house with the book fair. And then this Thursday and Friday, we have two big field trips. We have the sixth grade trip down out to Star Island and they have some changes this year, which I'm excited to see. And then the seventh grade goes over to Lake Wenupasaki to Geneva Point. And so that's, those two trips are out and we tend to send pictures back and forth from the trips. It's really fun that, to have both of them out at the same time. September 19th is sports physicals. September 21st is school picture day and the 22nd, which is a Friday, the fifth graders hike up Mount Cardigan and that's all I have to put them up.
All right. So I'll start off with our sports and Mr. Underwood, as promised, had the numbers for us, number of participants for each team. So right now, which is great, on the girls soccer team, they were able to pull out some more players, so they're up to 13 there. Boys soccer somewhat exploded with 32 players out on their field. Football has 24, volleyball's at 14, cross-country 19, and field hockey is large also with 33. He wanted everyone to know that the soccer teams do have a few co-ed games scheduled with the schools who do not have separate boys and girls squads. In fact, I think they played this afternoon over at Holderness, did a co-ed game with, I think, just the seventh and eighth graders. Said the football numbers are down from a year ago. I think they were at 38 last year, they're at 24 now. So they won't be fielding two teams as they did last year, but they are still involved in the Granite State League and everybody has rolled into action. Football did open up this past weekend down at Merrimack Valley. They did come out on the losing end of it, but Coach Ramsey said a lot of, you know, first time jitters and early mistakes and so he's anticipating they'll work through those. What else do we have? Soccer was over at Holderness today and tomorrow on the 12th, we've got cross-country running at Guilford. Boys soccer will play at Newfound, girls soccer team will be hosting Newfound. On the 13th, Wednesday, volleyball will open up at Gilmington and football will be hosting Guilford this coming Saturday, right next door at the Plymouth High School field. So that's it for those games. And then, as Julie had noted, we had our eighth grade hike this past week, last Tuesday and Friday, another adventure out to the White Mountains. And this year's notch trip saw 42 students and 17 adults make their way up the four trails of Galehead, Greenleaf, Mitzvah, and Lonesome Lake. And the day began with some rain and the trails were a little wet from the previous days of rain, but the kids were great and everybody came prepared and the rain didn't dampen anybody's spirits along the way. In fact, my group, I did Galehead, they were singing for a good portion of the hike, so it was, it was a fun group. Each group on the four trails was able to summit. It was, it's always very windy up there and sometimes we luck out and you get gorgeous views. This time it was the clouds kind of blowing in and out the view, so you'd have moments of it, clouds would swing in and then it would open back up again. And then eventually, when we got down back to the hut, the sun came out and so everybody took advantage of that, of kind of getting outside and relaxing in the warmth and drying out our shoes. So that was good. As always, this is a great trip, there is that academic piece as well, so while we're on the hike, the students do bring up Ziploc baggies with all of their work in it and some of the various things they do. For instance, the science program, they've started out studying weather and climate as their first unit, so the students made weather observations and then compared their observations to the weather report that's provided up in the AMC huts every day. They also use drawing skills and a tool called a jewelry loop to make observations and inferences about a natural object. And then they'll take all of those drawings and put those in, they each have a notch trip journal that they keep. Within language arts, Mrs. Tanner piqued the interest of the, the students going on the trip. They read two different stories that involved wilderness hiking and personal struggles. Over the summer, they read Backwater by Joan Bower and then they're currently reading Savage Mountain by John Smelser, which was great too, as we're up there at the hut. So the kids didn't all have to bring a book for each one of them, the adults just carry up one book. And in our group, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Chamberlain took turns reading some of the chapters and it was amazing the number of adults that came out of the hut and were also just sitting out and quietly listening to the reading and enjoying it and relating to it, which was nice. What else do we have? Social studies, Mr. McDonald has the students place themselves in the shoes of an early settler and their mission is to give a detailed account of how they would survive if they were one of those early settlers, right down to food, clothing, housing, the weather they'd experience, all of those things. So it's, it's a great trip in terms of that too, because as the kids are hiking, they're also taking notice of things around them and we're reminding them to do so and they're just gathering a lot of information. As always, the students receive unbelievable remarks from the hut crew when we're up there and the number of other hikers. There's a lot of what they call through hikers that are up and stay in the hut, various different age levels of people that are there and they, most of them cannot believe that we are there on a field trip. And so it's really fun to share that information with them. Wanted to take a moment to thank those folks that traveled with us and served as the medics on each of the hikes. Eli Chamberlain, Scott Southworth, Charlie Barker, and Susan Greenler, each divided up and went on to one of those hikes and they do a great job with our kids and sometimes with the adults. Mrs. Carey needed a Band-Aid. But it's just a wonderful trip, it's a great challenge for our kids. And besides that academic portion of the trip, I think the kids really learn a lot about themselves and it's a great sense of accomplishment when you see them reach the top and then even when they get down to the bottom the following day to the bus and they can look back and go, oh my God, we did that, you know? And so it's great and yeah, so thank you very much for that trip. It's a lot of fun, I enjoy it. On that, that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Privilege of the floor, anyone willing to speak tonight? Mike?
Just a question about this, what is NCR's handbook?
Good question. That's Don Katic Oracle Resource Room, it's one of our special programs.
Consent items, claims and payroll, no sign, yes correspondence?
Uh, there is none.
Discussion items, fund fundraising form?
Just pass this out.
I think they have one in there.
Oh, you do, okay, great. Basically, this came up over the last couple of years for different classes and some of the other events in our school that there seemed to be a lot of fundraising and, and sometimes teachers get hit hard, hardest. So we thought this is basically an organizational tool that would just help us keep track of fundraising in the building, the timing of it, so that it's, it's just not, they're coming in and there's just an assumption that, that it's going to take place. So it's, we definitely encourage it, we know it's an important part of what we do, but it's just really an organizational tool.
Any questions? Easy. Records retention policy?
Yes, put it in your packet. Our, our changes, these are, the policy itself comes from the School Boards Association and they have their attorneys go through here and make sure that all of us are complying with state law. So in front of you, you have data, records retention, and then the local records retention schedule. And basically, what we've done is take the School Boards Association policy, model policy, and we would adopt it as ours. And then the list of record retention are basically what we have to keep over the number of years for certain kinds of records. And, and that is all done, the, most of the records are held in the SAU office or in storage or on, on disk, depending on the, on the situation. So you can see there's, there's all kinds of requirements here, page after page of records and they, the retention is cited in either state law or federal law. And so you can, I would point out a couple of them to you, particularly in the area of special education. There are, yeah. Where's my favorite one?
Sixtieth birthday.
It's the what?
Sixtieth birthday.
Yes. Yeah, that's pretty good, we really, yeah. Personnel records, retention and the term of employment, plus 50 years. So somebody, somebody is with us until next year and then, starting then, for another 50 years, we have to retain those records. Again, application for employment, we have to hold them for 50 years. And you can see some, some of the list of stuff, so. And it was one that, where was the special ed one that had, it's one that has until the student turns 60 or 65.
The first page.
It's in there, it's in there, one of these pages. But there's some doozies in here, so it just tells you that we, we hold a lot of records for an awful long time. And Lynn Davis's job is, when we get requests for some of this, is to go into storage and give her coal miner's cap and send her on her way and she comes out sooner or later. So basically, what we're doing is, we're doing exactly what the state government or federal government want us to do and so that's what you would be adopting as a policy.
Something you want to vote on tonight?
You can either vote on it tonight or you voted at your next meeting, whatever the board's comfortable doing.
It's the lever. You want to vote tonight or you want to wait until we have everybody here? I don't think it's an issue. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I would motion to table this.
Table it till the next evening? Okay. A second.
Yep. If any board member has any, any specific question, just call me and, and I'll get you either the special ed director or whoever's responsible for.
Okay. Next. Snow removal bid?
Yes, as you know, we went out to bid, we went out to bid for three years and it was a joint bid between the high school, Plymouth Elementary School and the Romney School District. And we had one bidder, as we have had for a number of years, that's R.M. Piper from Plymouth. His bid for the elementary school is $10,500 a year and it's just a little more than we paid the last three years, but that would hold over the next three years. Some years, we win and some years, the contractor wins, it just depends on, on, on the weather. But I have to tell you, Dick Piper's crew has done a terrific job getting our complexes up and running for the, for the start of school. We are very, very fortunate to have them do this for us. In years past, we've had a couple contractors look at this, but over, over the time, no one can quite, quite, I don't think can quite match Dick's prices or his service, so I'm very pleased to offer this as a, a three-year contract for the next three years.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract. So moved?
A second.
Okay, hi.
Thank you.
I've signed it.
Great.
Topics for the board member retreat, the end of month?
Yes, the retreat, it won't be a board meeting, there won't be privilege of the floor, there won't, there won't be manifests. It's an opportunity for the board to get together and really talk about policy and set direction for the administration for the next five to seven years. We've had some turnover in the board, we've had some turnover in, in faculty and every once in a while, we really like to do this and it's, and it's, it's not Julie and I and Kelly coming to you saying, we need to do this, this, and this. We administer the policy that's set by the board, so we're going to discuss things like class size, you know, big picture issues. And you're the elected officials and you, you really set that kind of policy and we administer it. So if you have, have big picture topics you want to talk about, that's the night really to do it. And it gives you some time to, to think about things and you don't have to react that night, you can react to it two meetings from now. But it's an opportunity to talk about big picture issues because we generally, these are, these are business meetings and we roll through and we do the business of the district. And sometimes the philosophy and the, and the real reason that we're here goes by the wayside because I'm over here counting nickels and dimes and Julie's chasing this and Kelly's chasing that. So that's the night when we talk about, what are we doing and why are we doing it? So I don't know if you, if you have other, I, I want to talk about class size because it's an issue, it's a pull and tug in the community, you know, that folks that are watching the tax rate are saying, class sizes are much too low. And then folks that are involved and have kids here are saying, class sizes are much too hot. And so it's that constant tug and, and so, though we've never had drop dead arbitrary numbers, we've always sort of gone by the feel of the room. There are, there are state guidelines that we certainly want to follow, so. And that's just a...
Let's talk about the building.
The building?
Sure. See where we are on some of the planning.
Yep.
Whether we need to start putting money away for any sorts of, any sorts of repairs or upgrades or something.
Yep.
And of course, the greenhouse.
Yes.
And I will also, that night, I'll have both assistant superintendents here with us too, for their expertise and it's, it's my desire to have Kyla be the superintendent after I leave, so it's certainly a choice of the entire SAU board, but beginning to have Kyla take a real overview of, of the SAU and, you know, what, what's going to, what's it going to look like down the road? So both Kyla and Ethel will be here. Ethel will be here for two more years and then she's going to retire. So, great. And then, if you, again, if, if something comes to you, let us know and we'll put it on there for that.
Any other business discussion? Privilege of the floor too. Mike?
Question about snow removal, can we, is it possible to really get that, that road coming in, that downhill really treated well? Because there were times, I never noticed it when I had a four-wheel, an all-wheel drive vehicle, but if I'm afraid to come down with my minivan, because I'm afraid if I lose control, I'm not turning, I'm going to plow straight into the cars that are at that bend and in turn, I'm going to hit, people are going to hit me from behind, kids and parents are walking, it's just going to be really, I'm just really concerned about that. So when I hear that road are a little bad, like I don't, like lucky for me, I just live close, I live and walk the distance, so I have that option, but for folks that... just lived close. I didn't walk the distance. So I have that option. But for folks that don't and don't have an all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive vehicle, it's, I'm worried about something happening.
The jurisdiction of the school begins at the SAU driveway. The road from there up is the town of Plymouth. So you'll often see the brown plow trucks come down and then they turn around right in front of my office and then go back up. So we, Piper won't touch them. I mean, he begins plowing at the PES driveway, at the top of our driveway, and then right by my office and in. Park and rec occasionally will touch up if the town radios and says, "We're busy all over the place." And your point is well taken. 28 years of driving down that hill, I've sort of seen it all. So it is, it's true. Everything that you talked about, Mike, is absolutely true. But park and rec will sometimes help clean up, but that's really the town of Plymouth. And they do a really good job for us. I mean, we're really, after the firehouse and a couple of other emergency places, we're number one on that list, particularly when we're in school. So again, we talk to the town every year and we'll have that conversation again.
Is there something where we can actually go and voice?
Well, it would be a selectmen's meeting. Yeah, the highway department answers to the board of selectmen. You wouldn't really have to go to a selectmen's meeting. You always can. But you can see the town administrator. And then he has a very similar role that I have for the town. So his name's Paul Fredes. It's down at town hall.
Even a letter to the selectman would probably be well received, probably be read into the record.
Another question, just about that retreat. Is that open to the public?
Yes. Yeah. There's no privilege of the floor, though. It's sort of a work session. And so it's always at the discretion of the chair. He can do anything he wants, but we don't schedule it. But it would be at the discretion of the chair. He can or doesn't.
So if we do ask questions, we could.
But it'd be at the discretion of the chair. Yep.
Is that something that we could send a topic, like you would like you guys to talk about?
Sure. Sure. Yep.
You have a topic you like to see discussed? You know, let us know ahead of time if you want, or bring it up.
Yeah. Well, if you can get us ahead of time, and we do some research on it, too. Board members would have that background before the meeting even began, so.
Just on that, who do we send concerns to? Is it to you, Mike?
Send it to my office, to Mike, to Julie. Yeah, it gets where it needs to go.
Where are we at with the part-time teaching teacher? Are we going to now use those funds to potentially hire this person from January, March to help Mr. Stevens?
We'll take a look at it. Some of those funds have been chewed up by special education. But certainly, we don't want to not have holes in our curriculum. So two things, we have to follow the collective bargaining agreement. And at the same time, we want to provide those opportunities. So, you know, I'm comfortable in mid-October saying, okay, it looks like we have what we have and we'll go forward. So. But Julie and Kelly will have those conversations with me about what we could do and what it would look like.
Sorry, just, that just made me have a second question. If you look at the level of students in terms of academic ability and kind of just plot them out on that bell curve, and I say this with the utmost sensitivity, and I applaud the school in SAU 48 for working so diligently, putting a lot of funds into the special ed for the one end of that bell curve, but I'm wondering if equal that person funds are being applied to the other end of the bell curve?
Not in terms of dollars spent, to be very honest with you. But we need to comply with the federal law. And there's no federal law for the other end of the bell curve. But certainly, it's our intent to individualize instruction and make sure every kid has an opportunity to go as fast as they can or as deeply as they can. And we have an acceleration policy here in SAU 48. So if you're ripping through your curriculum at the local elementary school, you have access to the high school. If you rip through the high school curriculum, you have access to Plymouth State University. So that's sort of where we're at. In terms of individualized things, I think just this morning, Ethel Gage is talking about something. I don't know if you've got the, for the November date, or that Dr. Harper is coming from California. She's got a grant for technology and a couple of other things that student and teacher would go to an event. So we have a lot of individualized programs for kids and their interests.
It sounds like the mechanism we were talking about before that was kind of do it on your own approach.
Well, each building has opportunities, but we try and coordinate with the other districts in the SAU and using the resources of the high school.
I just really like the program that was set up last year for my daughter, who's in grade three, where they had.
Some of the National Honor Society students.
Yes, that kind of thing. Where they would take, you know, those kids on that one end and just kind of for hour every other day or something, just do something.
Sure.
At another level to, you know, not even at another level, but another angle of the same topic or a different topic, just to keep their minds going.
Absolutely.
From multiple directions. And I'm just wondering if that is an option this year? Is that going to be?
The National Honor Society at the high school is an option every year. They take requests. And I know the older kids love coming over here and doing that. So, yeah, it's just a matter of us saying.
Do we make the request to you principal, Glenn, or?
I'd love to hear from you for sure.
And now's the time. It's a good time here because they begin to, they're getting settled right now. And even the kids next door are getting their schedules squared away and what they're doing. But they will quickly want to do some projects. So, yeah, I mean this sincerely, the resources next door are there for both schools. It's just a walk across the lawn either way. And we're really excited about the options that these, our kids at Plymouth Elementary will have when the high school is done in the CTE Center. And we've already talked with Jeff and Kara here. So, yeah, I think we're going to have some really great options here.
I'd like to get that conversation moving sooner and that program started sooner because last year was great, but there was no closure. It's like, I remember Isabelle saying, "We did all this, but then it just kind of stopped." There was no, you know, even if there was some kind of built into the academic fair or something, it would have been just great even for the kids to say, "Hey, listen, this is what we did as a group on this project. I was separate," you know? So if we could talk about that sooner, that would be great. And sorry, one last thing. Hockey season starts coming next month, so I got to start coaching. So I would like to make board meetings, but if I could get on that mailing list for the adminants?
Sure.
And if it's okay, if I could send questions prior to the board meetings, that we can answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Just make sure we have your email address. Julie has it and we'll get everything sent, too.
There you go. Entertainer motion to go in a non-public session?
So moved.
Second, thank you.